All right, I'm going to call the Thursday, October 16th, Business Meeting of Narberth Borough Council to order. Ms. Walker, do you want to make some pledge? There we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stoss, you can call her on.
My pleasure. President Bush?
Here.
Vice President Rickards?
Here.
Councilmember Winston?
Here.
Councilmember Barach?
Here.
Councilmember Spear?
Here.
Councilmember Galdini is absent. Councilmember Sammanson?
Here.
And Mayor Andrew Deutsch?
Here.
I have no comments for tonight. Mayor Deutsch?
Just a couple of brief ones. As of our last public safety meeting, which was last Friday, there had been 40 tickets issued through the red light cameras in the borough alone for people passing through a school bus safety zone. That is a swift $300 ticket. Don't do it. Learn the lesson from them. Stop when you're supposed to stop and keep our kids safe. Secondly, speaking of saved kids, it's getting darker at night. Please be careful as people are going through the borough. We're coming up on Halloween, an annual length where kids are going to be all over the place. So if you don't have to go out, it's probably best to stay in. And then just be careful as you travel around the borough, particularly, especially on Halloween night. And please keep your eyes out for little bugs and keep everyone safe.
Thank you. And as a reminder, the school bus, it's when those arms are extended that you cannot pass a school bus. When you stop, the arms are extended, that means kids are leaving the school bus. Very important to stop.
It's also a caution reply.
Yeah, hint, hint. Stoss, do you have a manager's report?
I do, yes. So we hosted a Bridgetown Hall on September 30th. It was attended by about, I think I counted around 45 people in person and another 20 or so on Zoom. That is available now on our website to view. So we had a nice Q and A. And we're working with our consultants now to compile those Q and A questions to put on the website as well so that we have some reference materials as a follow-up if you want to listen to the whole conversation. So I had brought this up, there was a Q and A. So we have our Bridge page on the landing page of our website. So I hope everyone has been able to find that. We do now also have a website dedicated to all of the zoning work that we're doing and the ordinance updates. So that is also in kind of the main on the landing page, one of the quick links at the top there. So that should be easy to find. Otherwise, we've been busy with budget work and we are also managing a couple of audit processes. So we're being audited right now by the state pension system. So for union and non-union, I'm sorry, uniform and non-uniform pensions. So Emily's been very busy pulling together all of the documentation for that. That is not an annual audit. This is only done every, once every couple of years. So we're pulling information from the last few years, which, given the turnover, has made documentation a little bit more challenging to find. So she's been working hard at that. So I thank her for all of her efforts there. We also had our MS4 inspection. So we had somebody from DEP come out last week for that. We passed with flying colors. Thank you to Jeff for keeping a tight ship in our public works yard for managing that. And Panoni did provide the annual end of year report. So our reporting cycle for our MS4 permit goes from June, or July 1st to June 30th. Reports are due in September, so that was submitted a few weeks ago. So that is all closed out for the year. So we're in good standing with our permit, which is great to hear. And otherwise, we are wrapping up our Pilot Avenue, I'm sorry, Price Avenue Pilot Project. So we are sending letters out to all the folks, reaching out to everybody to just compile any additional information. So we plan to have that feedback ready for discussion at the Public Health and Safety Meeting next month. And then we can make final decisions as to what we want to do about that.
I'll just add that these audits are routine, that everybody gets audited for the pensions every few years.
Correct.
The MS4 audits are also, every municipality in the state is getting.
Yeah, so we have to go through the, so the MS4 inspection is mandatory once every permit cycle. And then the state pension audit is, yes, periodic, once every few years, everybody gets audited. This is not indicative of anything bad or not being done properly. This is just part of the process that we have to go through. So we are working through all of those.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to public comment. Seeing no one in the room for public comment, we can move to people online who wish to make a public comment. As a reminder, you'll have three minutes. And please give your name and your address if you wish to make a public comment. So Carol Marie?
Hello. So Fred, you had said over the past several months that October is when the appraisal or the assessment was going to go out for the Montgomery Avenue side of 201 Sabine, which is the Sabine Park. So my question is, what are the plans for that appraisal assessment or RFP, RFQ, you know, however you are classifying that? When is it going out and what's the timeline? What are the development plans for that property? Next question I have is, will any of these proposed zoning changes in the 3B going to affect Sabine Park? Next question. Is there a place where we can actually see what is currently mapped out with 3B as compared to what their proposed changes are? And next question is, how many total bump outs are planned for the borough? And then my final question is, what real estate is being discussed in the executive session?
All right, so the bump outs, I'll start with that. We have a pollutant reduction plan that's on the borough website.
I'm sorry, what's it called?
It's called the Pollutant Reduction Plan. This is, when we talk about the MS4 that Maggie was talking about, this is a state requirement for the borough to reduce its sediment in the stormwater runoff. So the borough's plan that was approved by the state is on the website. We've been doing a few bump outs a year. I am not completely sure how many remain to be done.
It's somewhat dependent upon, so the bump outs are sediment captures, which achieves the pollutant reduction and sediment reduction of our pollutant reduction plan. So as part of the MS4 permit, we have a PRP, pollutant reduction plan. As part of that, we have to reduce the sediment loading in our waterways by a certain amount. The BMPs that we're installing are intended specifically to serve as sediment captures. They don't do stormwater control from a volume standpoint. It's a sediment capture to achieve the PRP goals. And those we have to achieve by next, next year.
Okay.
So is there?
I would say, you can look at the plan on the website and that will give you the details. And then we've also.
The total at one point was 19.
The total is 19 and we have currently built six.
We did two, how many?
The original is, it was 23.
23, okay.
It was 1911, I guess.
We all have eight done, once they wrap up the other two.
Okay.
But there's another factor, which is sort of what Maggie was hinting at, was that like if other development happens, that where stormwater, you know, is, it's improved on another site, it would reduce, like, at one point there was a proposal, which we're not doing, to like open up the stream through the park.
Right.
That would have greatly reduced the number of bump outs.
Yeah. So it sounds like right now we have 15 more that are planned to be put throughout the borough. However, if there is a development that involves a stormwater improvement that would reduce the borough's requirements potentially, no? All right, Maggie's giving me the wrong, the naughty look. I thought that that was the case, but maybe not. Anyway, according to our approved plan with the state, we have 15 more. You can find that plan on the borough's website.
So remember years?
In addition, there's a second plan. So Panoni, our contractor, evaluated some possible locations for the bump outs. I think that plan is also on the borough's website. Council hasn't agreed to any particular sites beyond the ones that are being built right now. But those are the proposed future sites are, have been identified by our engineering contractor. This is a long answer.
So years ago, here's like a back question. When the swale was proposed to go inside the ball field, that was, you know, many years ago. And it was said, where our silt goes downstream? What town does it go to? I don't remember what it was. Do you remember?
It flows into Indian Creek and then Indian Creek just makes its way.
Coffs.
To Coffs Creek.
Into the Delaware.
And then into the Delaware, I'm hearing. But it is the south branch of Indian Creek that is the impacted waterway that we are focused on.
I thought there was a town that we were flooding. Do you remember that from like 1990s?
I was not on council at that time, so I don't know. The 3B, the current zoning rules for the 3B can be found in our Borough Code. Just need to look at the SADO section and the standards for sites and standards for use in the 3B. So just look up Narberth Borough Code and.
Right, I know where that is. Do these changes affect Sabine Park though? Is that part, is that being?
Do they affect Sabine Park?
Potential, I'm assuming transit oriented.
We don't, we don't have any specific proposals on the table, so I can't tell you if it's going to apply to Sabine or not.
I don't believe Planning Commission has reached that segment of the corridor in their discussions yet. So that would be a discussion at Planning Commission if they want to make any recommendations to that zoning district.
Yeah, so there's nothing in front of council at this time.
We have a lot of work to do before it gets to the Planning Commission. I mean, we have, the county has a lot of questions to help consult with.
Regardless, we don't, I can't answer that as of yet. There's, there are no specific proposals that council has in front of them, so I can't look at them and tell you if they're going to affect Sabine or not.
Okay, Cindy, I'm sorry, what did you say? The county has questions about 3B or, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
We have a county planning agency that advises us for zoning changes. Montgomery County Planning Commission advises Planning Commission and council on zoning changes. So anything, any zoning changes would be reviewed by the plan, by MCPC, to see if they're in keeping with the county's goals, with our own stated goals, and, you know, in keeping with best practices of the laws.
Can I just, so I watched the video. I haven't noticed them talking about 3B at all.
No, it's 5B.
5B is.
Yeah, right. So Planning Commission right now is looking at 5B. 5B is Montgomery Ave. And 4A, which is south of the train station. So 3B, Planning Commission hasn't talked about it at all. That would be, maybe next year they'll talk about it at some point. So that's, it's going to be a while before we start working on those. Thank you. So even though, even though it's facing Montgomery, right now it's zoned.
3B?
3B. And we are not currently looking at changes in 3B. Probably at some point next year we will be, but we're not there yet.
Okay.
The other question was the, was the survey. We are not quite ready for that yet. So there's no action on the survey. The real estate matter, we received a proposal from a developer to do an adaptive reuse of the site. Council had an initial discussion and we decided not to pursue this further with this particular plan.
Was this for Sabine Park you're talking about?
Yeah, so there was a proposal to do adaptive reuse of the 201 Sabine building. It would have left the park as is. Would have turned the building into some apartments and it would have turned, it would have been a partnership agreement that would have made the borough a junior partner. It was a complicated proposal and we decided that we were not interested in that particular approach. So if we get a proposal like that, that we think is worthy of further attention, that we'd like to discuss further, we'll be asking the developer to come to an open meeting of council and bring that to the community. So should there be any other proposals that we want to pursue further, we're going to ask people to do it as a presentation in an open meeting so you can observe and, you know, make public comment as appropriate. But.
So did this developer reach out to you?
There was an email sent out to council and council had a discussion in executive session at the last meeting and decided not to pursue it.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks Carol Marie, sorry.
Okay, so Sabine Park is, are there plans to do any rezoning of that to 5B?
Not at this time. There's no, that's not on the table right now.
And do you have an idea when, what, what's the timeline for the appraisal going out for Sabine Park?
Council will have another discussion to approve it if we're going to go forward with it. Right now, there's no timeline for it.
So is the project dead?
No, but there's no timeline for doing it immediately. Thank you, Carol Marie.
Okay.
Yep, do you have a, do you have a public comment? Any further public comment? Louise? Do you wish to make a public comment? No, okay, that's it for public comment. Thank you, everyone. Let's move to the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda, items 8A through I.
Second. Okay. Any discussion of the consent agenda? All those in favor of consent agenda items A through I, raise your hand. All right, six votes. Consideration items. 9A is a dumpster.
I move to approve the dumpster license agreement except for in consideration of item 9A.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Walker?
This was a license agreement that came out of actually conditional use approval that was copied of the land development plan approval for the 230 Havreford redevelopment property with the 230 Havreford Development. Realized that through the giving up of, or I should say the purchase of that property, they then purchased, they had the right to purchase the parking lot. They did purchase the parking lot from the borough, although they did maintain, provided, maintained the borough with a license for parking. That parking lot's also used for dumpsters for essentially the entirety of that side of Havreford Avenue, the businesses and the apartments that are there. We wanted to make sure that there was still trash collection for those businesses and those apartments that are currently there on the property. This license agreement provides the right for the borough's trash collection agents, the vehicles to go access that dumpster and gives the right to the people that are there to use the dumpster for their trash collection. It will be in place until a future development of that property comes around. And at that point in time, there'll be an amendment to that agreement because the access of the trash trucks will come in from Havreford pursuant to those plans. So the trash rights should still be there, but it might change a little bit at that time. It's really just giving us the right to go onto the property and use those dumpsters, just as we always have.
Yeah, and this is complications due to the fact that this was a public parking lot and was owned by the borough and is now owned by a private developer. But there are still amenities there that are used by the community, so.
Well, not the community, just the.
Well, by the businesses.
There's a little bit of a sensitive issue with people.
Fair enough. Don't go using that dumpster if you are, if you are a Narberth resident unless you are a business at 230 Havreford.
It's never a public dumpster, but it was for the use of the businesses front of you.
Excellent point.
There is another dumpster in that alleyway behind the wreaths that is for the businesses.
It's sort of the same. Again, if we were to sort of, if we owned, if someone purchased that alleyway, we would still want the rights for that dumpster.
Right.
Sort of the same thing on the other side of the street.
Jim, I just realized, I said something backwards in public, in the Finance Administration. Endemifications, we indemnify them if our trucks do something, mess up their property. I have the indemnification backwards. Once you explain it, I rash to the licensing and license order. And the other thing I noticed in Finance Administration is that it does allow for us, for him to terminate the license if he takes over basically his own private trash hauling for the development as a whole.
Correct, because that would be for, at that point in time, there would not need to be trash trucking back. Because he also would be, this would also include the Little Jim property as well. So the entirety of the corner and the two buildings that weren't subject to the land development around that corner as well.
All right, any further discussion? All right, let's vote to approve the dumpster license agreement. All those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. 9B.
I'm in the Borough Council. There's a closure of the letter of credit, the amount of $72,862 for the 146 Marion Ave subdivision and land development project.
Second.
Okay. Who wants to summarize this one? Maggie?
Sure. So this is the first request for release of escrow for the subdivision land development project at 146 Marion. This relates to the sanitary sewer, stormwater management, a portion of the landscaping and some of the other public walkway improvements for that land development. So this escrow is essentially financial security for those public improvements. I mentioned this in FNA, I just want to make sure that everyone understands. The building permit, so there is somebody that owned one of the cottages. The home did sell. The building is done itself. It received a certificate of occupancy that is separate from the financial security and the public improvements and the site improvements, I should say, for the land development. So they are two kind of separate but complementary tracks. So it is very common to see homes completed and constructed prior to closure and completion of the full site improvements on the land development side of things. So this is, Panoni is certifying that the installation of those items that I mentioned are satisfactory either in full or in part. And they are good to release that portion then of that financial security because those components have been satisfactorily completed. There are additional things that are still outstanding, so we do still have about $55,000 left of the original security that we will hold until final completion of the project. So we'll expect to see one, if not two, more requests for escrow release as we get to the end of the, end of the project. But this is just the first escrow release now for a portion of those improvements.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? All right, let's vote on escrow, the first escrow release for 146 Marion Ave SADO project. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. 9C, final.
I move that Borough Council accept the resignation of Cheryl Bullitt as a member of the Police Advisory Committee.
Okay. Do we have the letter? Okay. Well, let me see if I can find it.
Can we just say thank you for your service?
Yep, just, yeah, the letter's not much. Yeah, I want to thank Cheryl Bullitt for the service. If we do, so we recently accepted the resignation of Rebecca Starr. So if, with the resignation of Cheryl Bullitt, there will only be two people on the Police Advisory Council. So they won't have a quarter. We need to find another member in order so that committee can meet. If anybody out there is interested in, if anybody who's listening is interested in police issues here in Narberth. Cindy, do you want to talk a little about what kind of?
Yeah, I think.
Do you know what the committee's worked on?
I think, you know, spaces for police and citizens to have dialogue and communication is always a good thing. I suspect now perhaps many more folks will be interested now that there might be some flexibility in those meeting times. So I think we can do a call to action and see if we can get somebody else that's interested and we'll be able to, the meetings in the evening.
Okay.
Versus the morning, which I know is a barrier for folks that work out of the house. So I think with, with some new flexibility, we'll get some more interest.
All right, so we'll find, put this into our email newsletter that will be looking for a new, at least one new member of the Police Advisory Council. Okay. All right, let's vote to, accept the resignation of Cheryl Bullitt from the Police Advisory Commission. All those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. I think council and commission, I'm not sure. I forget the name right this time. All right. Information items, reports are in the packet. Do we have any other reports you want to bring to our attention, Maggie? Is there a bridge update?
Yeah, I was going to say, all the reports are there for your reading. I don't think there's anything too crazy that we haven't already discussed. The one thing I want to mention about the Amtrak Bridge update, so we just started our bi-weekly coordination calls. So now that things are moving on the project a little bit more, I have bi-weekly coordination calls set up. I mean, I communicate via email pretty much every single day with our, our construction management team with TPD, but.
Which, which bi-weekly? Twice a week or every two weeks?
Twice, sorry, every other week.
Every other week, that's fine.
The English language is funny in that way. You can say bi-huntly, bi-weekly.
Yeah.
So every two weeks, we have a set call with myself, with our design engineer, with our construction management team and with the actual contractor. Who, so these were all the folks who were at the bridge meeting on the 30th to discuss what we have coming up. So we are making progress. We have everything teed up and finalized for the design change that we spoke about at last month's meeting for the material finish of the metal finishes. That is fine, good to go. Utility work is going to be the next thing that's coming up. So we're going to start to see some of that. We do anticipate that there will be some night work coming up as a result of the utility connections. There could be something, they say, to foul the tracks. Meaning that if you cut off a limb of a tree or a tree falls and it would hit the tracks, that would foul, F-O-U-L, foul the tracks. So they have to do a little bit of clearing, so that is going to happen in the evenings and some of those activities will potentially be disruptive. We recognize that. And so as soon as we have a schedule for that, we will be advertising what that is. So folks who live in the vicinity of the area will have a heads up about when that night work is going to take place, which was a question and a concern that was brought up in the bridge meeting on the 30th. So we'll do our utmost to make sure that we get that information out as early as possible. So as soon as we get that from the contractor, we will be sharing that. But that is to be expected in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. And it is, they'll have to do night work because they have to work when Amtrak isn't running, so.
Yeah, because I want to, you know, they have to actually shut down the line. Like they turn off the electricity to the line. So the catenary is the overhead lines that convey the electrical current. That all has to get completely shut down and they have lead time. So it can only be shut down for so long after a train passes through and has to be juiced up again so long before a train comes through. So they only have that window of time in between the trains when they can shut it all down to get in and do the work before they have to evacuate the tracks. So it's, it's limited, which is, you know, why it's challenging to do this sort of work on an active train line is because you kind of have to slot in smaller, shorter periods of work in between when the trains are active.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on to the committee reports. So FNA?
Sure. Finance Administration met earlier tonight. We usually are getting a zoning recodification update from Tom Bressi, but he was not able to join us tonight. But he did send a written update that says they're in quality control right now and they're having daily check-ins and problem-solving sessions and troubleshooting. And he expects to produce a draft by the end of this week. So maybe we'll see something in our inboxes or something. I'm not sure how that's going to get to us, but.
Well, it's probably going to go to the Planning Commission first. I don't know. I guess if they have a draft, they can send it to us and then have their initial discussion before our workshop meeting. I guess we'll see what they want to do.
We'll see.
Have a good one.
Sounds exciting. Sounds like things are really moving along. Then our only discussion item tonight was ongoing review of boards and commissions. And it was, I put together a little chart about where we are with each board and commission reviewing them. I think we're getting a handle on the work left to be done. I think we're getting handle on the work left to be done. I don't think we're going to complete it in our two-year hoped-for, um, schedule, but we'll, we'll get there. We'll get there. Next, I think we're going to try to get to Shade Tree Commission.
Is NIDA on your list or is that a quasi-independent potty?
It's not on our list.
Not on your list, all right.
We should pretty much.
We should.
It's complicated because we appoint the members, but they're independent at that point.
Yeah, we don't have the industrial commission.
Okay.
That's a good point, but, so I, I did put library board on our list too. I know that's also independent, but we do appoint two members of library board.
That sounds right.
So I would like to sort out that relationship as well when we get to it.
I'm not sure we have been appointing people to library board.
I noticed that.
Certainly in the bylaws, that's what you're allowed to.
Well, when I was on library board, I noticed there were two people consistently getting appointed, you know, two positions on library board. It's a large board. It's like eleven people and two are council appointees.
Worth looking into.
Yeah. Okay, and that's, that's pretty much it.
All right. Infrastructure?
It will be meeting at the end of the month.
Okay. Public Health and Safety?
Uh, Public Health and Safety met on October tenth. Uh, the traffic calling and safety policy. We received comments from Panoni and MCPC and the fire company. We had a few substantive comments from Panoni, which were discussed. And, uh, and then Public Works and Police are going to review the traffic calling toolkit options as well and provide feedback on that. We plan to integrate all of that and then vote to approve the policy at the next Public Health and Safety meeting, which is in November. And then it will also come before FNA in November and come before council in November, if all goes to plan. And then October twenty-ninth is when we'll have the Active Transportation Plan Steering Committee meeting, where the final plan will be presented for that. And we also got an update from EAC. They, we received a memo from them regarding the, their recommendations for gas-powered lawn equipment. So they have been working on that since 2023. And we gave initial feedback to them, uh, saying that we should follow Lower Marion's lead on, on this since we share the general service area and the landscaping companies are not aware of the boundaries between Lower Marion and Narberth. And on October eighth, I believe it was October eighth, Lower Marion voted to advertise their gas-powered leaf blower ordinance.
Oh, okay, so they voted to advertise, all right.
And so EAC recommended that the Narberth ordinance could either mirror this ordinance or, which only focuses on, on leaf blowers, or expand the regulation to include a phase-in for all gas-powered lawn equipment in two or three years. And so I believe the committee's general feeling is that we should mirror the Lower Marion's ordinance. And we'll discuss this further in Public Health and Safety.
Yeah, I think we'll have it for council as our, in our work session in November, probably. We'll see how Lower Marion proceeds.
As it stands, now, Lower Marion's ordinance is not a year-round ordinance. It's for a certain months of the year. It's about, it allows the gas-powered mowers, uh, gas-powered blowers, uh, spring and fall, but not in the winter and summer.
Possibly not what the EAC would have recommended, but on the other hand.
It's a, it's a phase-in. They're trying to get people acclimated to the-
Does it include like a, well, I'll take a look at the legislation, I guess, if it's been advertised. And recommend you all take a look too, because it'll be on our agenda whether we want to mirror that.
Fred, if you take a look, could you maybe just give us the link to Segway so we don't all have to go search for it?
Okay.
I, I do know that, you know, some people express concerns about sort of phasing it into so the contractors can gradually replace their equipment, not have to do it all at once.
Yeah.
At a fairness.
So Lower Marion's ordinance goes into effect in 2026.
Yeah.
Uh, but the effective date will be around May because, uh, because of the seasonal.
Spring.
Right, yeah.
And then, and then in 2028, it would be, spring would be allowed or banned as well. And then in 2029 will be year-round.
Okay, all right. Baby steps. All right. All right, all right. I commend Lower Marion for taking action here and I look forward to seeing the legislation so that we can join our community partners. Thank you, Jean. Uh, any new business for council? Old business? Comments for the good of council?
I'll just mention, you've talked about Halloween. The witches in Narberth is Saturday, the twenty-fifth in the afternoon. So there'll be little kids running around the borough that afternoon too.
Yep.
And I happen to know that some people are working really hard on bringing some new stuff to the table.
And you might even see our staff members.
And you might even see a borough staff member at one of the stops.
Or two.
Or two. Do I need your hat size too?
Yes.
Okay, before we leave.
Okay.
There's also the Halloween bike ride from Narberth Cycling Club on October twenty-sixth, Sunday. And then there's the Halloween parade on October thirtieth.
Okay, then I'm going to plug, this is a no-kid event, because we have all these kid events. The adult fund is November eighth, it's February. Kids can come to all the other things.
And it's for the benefit of the law.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I'll just plug. That's very important.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Uh, so we will have an executive session now? Are we going to have an executive session? Do we need one?
No, not three.
I also want to further discuss, but we discussed last-
Yeah, I don't think so. All right, there will be no, no executive session after this meeting. Uh, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of adjourning?
We are. We are, Fred.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Personal record.